2025 Albany County Commissioners's Regular Meeting. And the first order of business is call to order and roll call. So we are called to order, roll call Commissioner Gozar.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Jones present. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The third order of business is our public hearings. The first public hearing is the Mitchell Varian's V A R dash zero one dash two five. Is there anyone online or in the room that would like to make comment on the Mitchell Varian's V A R dash zero one dash two five? Anyone in the room or online that would make like to make public comment on the Mitchell Varian's V A R dash zero one dash two five? Hearing nothing and seeing nothing, may I have a motion to close?
Move to close the Mitchell Varian's public hearing V A R dash zero one dash twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The second public hearing is the Morris Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash zero six dash two five. Is there anyone online or in the room that would like to make public comment on the Morris Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash zero six dash two five?
Limit comment?
Yes, and I'm going to limit comment this morning on three minutes per person. Okay. Let's give you last call for this Morris. Oh, okay, good.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. I'm Michelle Tilly and I gave you this packet. There is another one, this has a few modifications, but really I put it together with an executive summary so that it would be easier to digest. And we're against this, well, my husband and I, I don't want to speak for the whole neighborhood, but mainly because it will change the tenor of our neighborhood, it'll change the character of the neighborhood, the fabric of the neighborhood. Right now, every single place has one dwelling, and that's not just in North Fork, that's in Twin Rivers, that's in Rainbow Valley. So by changing one, it actually instituted spot zoning, which means this one little sliver of our community, in the middle of our community, would then be zoned differently. That also, by the way, sets precedent, which, as you know Commissioners, that you guys all have this great master plan and that would go against the master plan. We have other issues with this. This, this particular property has been out of compliance for nine years. And I have the various letters in here, and if you want me to point them out to you, I'm happy to do that, I'm sure you're aware of them already, where they were notified that they were out of compliance and have never changed it, not until it went for sale. And so the compliance, they actually private compliance on the 23rd of June, and when there's, there's for sale sign was already up. And it'll tell you after the P and Z committee or commission meeting, it's still being rented, so they're still out of compliance and they're still renting the second and first and second dwellings. So this isn't, um, this isn't about the Airbnb, this is about our neighbors not caring about our neighborhood, leaving and then trying to rezone as they leave, as they exit the door, changing our neighborhood. So that is about all I want to say today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to come on up?
Brad Wilson, member of, well, I live in North Fork. I'm also the president of the North Fork Owners Association. The Owners Association has no, no bearing really on this hearing because we are, we only exist because of the roads. But the covenants that are mentioned in Michelle's packet, our covenants that, that run with our land, what they do is they set that tenor of the neighborhood that isn't really, you know, again, we don't, we don't enforce those except for, except for a covenant ten, but they set the tone for the neighborhood, which says that everything shall be a single family dwelling with no other dwellings on board. It can have one accessory building, not an accessory dwelling. So, you know, again, making that point about the, the neighborhood, the tenor of the neighborhood and what the master plan was, was put, was, was trying to state, I guess, when we defined ranchettes. The Morises had presented a couple of letters in their, in their things that they had put forth. And like, at least you, and then there's three, and there's enough to go around that. Claiming that this property has been in compliance and has been taxed properly for the entirety of its existence. Yeah, but I, when I back into what the market values would have been from 2016 through 2025, I don't see any rate increase in there, especially in 2016, where the, the rate went from 2016 to 2017 on the very right column, went up 12%. So they, they, they built a 1,600 square foot garage with the dwelling in it, and it, and the value went up by $40,000. I don't think they've been taxed properly on this. Michelle's, page 12 of Michelle's information has some stuff about talking to the county assessor, and the assessor is not aware and has never done given access to this property. So it has been taxed properly. So I think there's just like this clear continual saying that they're right and they're not, saying that they're in compliance and they're not. And so I encourage you to, to, to decline this, to decline this request. But, but moreover, to, to take some action that enforces the decision that you make, if you come to the decision that we hope you do, how are we, how do you actually enforce this so that, so that there is a change made, not just in taxes, but if this is, if this is declined, then what happens to this? What happens to this, to this building? Can it be rendered so that it's no longer a dwelling? That's my encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
My name is Jan Alvany. I live in North Fork also. I pretty much agree with everything that's been said. I just wanted to point out, I have given the Commissioners a copy of the listing that they're putting up for their house. As of Sunday, they are still listing it as a farm dominium, a dwelling that can be lived in. They're still renting it out, there were renters there this weekend. So they're continuing to make money on this property, which has been in compliant, not in compliance, for nine years. Now, I know the county has an ability to fine people for transgressions, and I was hoping that the county would actually step up and enforce your regulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like, come on up.
I've written some up, I can make over three minutes, you can't kill me for it. Because I can shorten it if you're.
Yeah, it needs to be, we need to keep it.
Keep it, okay. Well, this is my first opportunity to, I've been visiting relatives. And so I looked at everything, I've read all the submissions regarding this rezoning application. Yesterday, I wrote a letter in opposition, it was turned in this morning. To me, this is the crux of it. Mr. and Mrs. Morris purchased their property intending to rent it short term when they weren't using it, that was their right to do. In 2015, they obtained a zoning permit to build a garage to store snowmobiles. Mrs. Morris, a real estate agent, had zoning compliance knowledge, but when they constructed the garage, they included a three-bedroom, one-bath resident, which they had no right to do. In July of 29, the Morises were sent a letter by the county planning office informing them that they were not in compliance with their zoning permit and septic, and they should permit the residential structure. It appears no action was taken because the planning office sent them a follow-up letter in October of 2019. That letter, for whatever reason, only reminded them of the septic system issue, which they dealt with. Now they're saying they weren't aware of the zoning violation until June of 2025. And I've asked the planning office, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you, the Albany County Commissioners, to bail them out of their non-compliance by rezoning their property to the detriment of the property rights of their neighbors and the other property owners in the North Fork subdivisions. So respectfully, I request that you do not approve the Morris rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry ma'am, the clerk needs your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Teresa Hackett, I live at 166 North Fork Road.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Anyone online that would like to make public comment?
Yes.
Please.
I am Renee Morris, I am the property owner of the 100 North Fork Road. And all these accusations that have been made against us, you know, while some are true, some are not, we are totally asking for compliance, the structure is already there. We feel that this is just a simple paper maneuver to go ahead and keep us in, or get us back into compliance with the Albany County. You did receive my letter that I submitted last week. And everything is there in front of you on that. So I won't drag this out, but we would just appreciate your approval of this application, just to bring ourselves into compliance. And the residents of North Fork, you know, it is more strictly targeted that we are a short-term rental. We do have respect for our neighbors, we have very strict rules in, in place for our renters. We have cameras up and we do monitor that. With that said, you know, it's, it's kind of appalling to, you know, some of these folks that have actually rented our property for their own enjoyment with family and, you know, other things that we have done, done around the neighborhood, you know, that, that we are, are being so ridiculed. But I will not take up any more of your time Commissioners, I do know that you have a very full agenda here today. So I just wanted you to, give you that two cents and ask for your approval on this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
I live at 4 South Streamside, which is just a road from this property. Sure. Haley tells me that. But that's like defense tactic. In regards to the letter that she's referring to, she indicates in here that, and this was sent to you and is included in the packet that the Commissioners received before the meeting. The dwelling space on county records is 1,600 square feet, not the lesser amount that she refers to. Here's the print of the assessor's page. On that reprint, and there is one in the packet that Michelle Tilly gave to you and to the planning commission before this was heard, it specifically states that according to their measurements, it's 1,600 square feet. So in her assertion that this building is not 1,600 square feet was false. Additionally, you'll notice that there are no bedrooms accounted for. That's because the county assessor was not made aware of that. And therefore, the property taxes have been incorrect for that entire period. This building is being used as, as income-producing property in an area that is a residential area. The traffic is disruptive, it damages the roadways. We have people walking through the yard all the time, and they are VRBO people who don't live there and don't have respect for our community. We would urge you to vote no and turn this down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make a comment?
I would like to add some, speaking to Teresa Hackett, speaking to Mrs. Morris's comment about how they operate that, the rental of that building, that really, I don't think has any bearing on this. It still doesn't negate the fact that the building is non-compliant and has been since it was put in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you might, if I ask you a question? Teresa?
Yeah.
Who lives to the east of you? It's listed under Durham Investments, you know, your easterly neighbor?
I'm no good at directions, can you give me?
It'd be 156, it'd be the one closer to the fire station.
It's, is the the Curtises.
Okay.
And if you want to know more.
I just, it's listed under Durham Investments LLC.
Yeah, they changed that listing a while about ago because they also do a short-term rental.
Okay, of the whole property.
And it's for sale.
And I'm sorry, this is public comment, I just.
Yeah, and it's for sale, incidentally.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make public comment? Anyone online like to make public comment? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move that we close the Morris Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash zero six dash twenty-five public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The third public hearing is Pete Lean and Sons Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash oh seven dash two five. Would anyone like to make public comment on the Pete Lean and Sons Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash zero seven dash two five? Okay, this is the last time. Very good.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Rich Marsh, I'm with Pete Lean and Sons. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here in the audience to answer any questions that, that may come up. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and we request approval of the zoning district amendment. So, we'll be back if you need me. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to make public comment either online or in the room for the Pete Lean and Sons Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash zero seven dash two five?
Move that we close the public hearing for Pete Lean and Sons Zoning District Amendment Z D A dash zero seven dash two five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. Would anyone like to make comment this morning? Either online or in the room? Would anyone like to make a public comment this morning? Either online or in the room? Hearing, seeing none, may I have a motion to close?
Do you need to make a comment, please?
I want to make a comment, I'm Mara Wentworth.
Thank you, Pete.
A resident of Rainbow Valley Community up in Centennial. And I had another short-term rental in our neighborhood, by Middle Mountain Drive. I think it's owned rural residential. And I just was, I was curious about, they have four units on 1.18 acres when they were building this, and watching that subject go in, I did not see that it can maintain four units. So I just wanted to make a comment about another short-term rental up there.
And that was five Middle Mountains?
Five Middle Mountain Drive.
And your name, please?
Mara Wentworth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make public comment this morning? Either online or in the room?
I move that we close the public comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any, item five is disclosures?
None for me, but I'm checking.
None for me, you've got one, I think.
On item 12, thank you very much, Bailey. Item six, considerations of changes to the agenda.
Morning Commissioners, I need to add one item, it's an MOU with the city of Laramie to do our mosquito monitoring services. That is required from our emergency insect management grant. I meant to get it on when I got the contract from the state and it just slipped my mind, so. It can be wherever you would like, I can hear the whole meeting, so.
Do you want to do, after 26?
Yep, that works, so it'll be 26A. Thank you very much. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, move that we approve or consent agendas presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eight of the regular agenda, discuss and approve commercial lease agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Disruptive Med Tech LLC for 3821 Beach Street. Jennifer, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Now, we have two existing leases with DMTI, both expire on September 15. In the lease that we did for the second floor of DMTI in June of last year, we had conditions in there on which they could extend the lease for a period of three years. Those conditions required a 3% rent escalation, which only addressed that second floor, we did not have a similar amendment in the first floor. And also, if they chose to extend, the DMTI would pay utilities, gas, city services, dumpster, I can't remember what else. So the lease that you have in your packet reflects those things. I also included a sheet in there that shows the breakdown on expenses and what the rent to the county is, both pre and after expense. Dave Reckbarger with DMTI is here, he had reached out to me. He would like to discuss renegotiation of the terms of an extension of the lease, given the circumstances that DMTI is in currently. He had sent a presentation, it is included in your packet, but Dave would like to speak with you also. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them now. If you'd like to listen to Dave's presentation, we can chat again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well. Thank you for taking the time to, to listen to me and the presentation I put into your packets and emailed over the weekend. It's kind of just a refresher of who DMTI is. You know, we're a medical device manufacturing company that started in the heart of COVID, which was one of the hardest things that I've ever done. We've been successful growing the business over, over the years to the point that just this quarter, we're going to be launching our own series of medical devices that are DMTI branded for the first time. So that's really exciting for us. So in doing so, we've been able to continue to add value to the Laramie and Albany County economy. Where our wages have gone up 23% in just the last two years to an average of over $25 an hour. We've put about $3.2 million back into the economy, working with about 42 independent local businesses, machine shops, locksmiths, you know, every, everything from cleaning services to actual manufacturing of products. And so everything that we're doing, we're putting back into the company. One of the challenges that we have is that we're just barely, barely profitable. And in that, looking at a 20% increase in our lease costs is very much untenable. I would like to propose that we strike the portion of the lease that includes the utilities. We'll accept the 3% rate increase that was already scheduled in that. And then there's a section on maintenance that says that we're responsible for the doors, the windows, the window coverings and stuff. I don't know how as a, as a tenant, we'd be responsible for parts of the building itself that we don't own. And so I would also like to reword section 4.2 to eliminate some of the physical structure of the building as our responsibility. So if, in your consideration, this still provides over $133,000 per year positive income to the county. So it's not, it's not going to put the county into a bind, but it would mean everything to our business to continue to invest, to continue to hire, to continue to, to grow our, our business and make Laramie a medical device manufacturing hub, which is what our goal has always been. Is there any questions I can answer?
I have, I have. So we sat, I was in on the discussion in the attorney's office in 2022, I think it was. And in that discussion, there was a clear delineation that this, going forward, when this lease was renegotiated, that utilities would be part of it. DMTI has not paid utilities of that building since it took over in 2020, so that is five years without utility payment. That was agreed upon by members of DMTI and.
And by me.
Yeah, you did. And so I find myself really disappointed that DMTI hasn't reached the place where it can be self-sufficient. Five years, in my opinion, as a business, is long enough to be able to pay the utilities and the reasonable rent that is being charged. In fact, you're not even being assessed market value on this where footage and there's only a 3% riser for the second floor, not on the first floor. Please tell me why you feel like that is a reasonable request? We are in the interest of the taxpayers of Albany County.
Understand, it was, it's, it's a business that is subject to external forces that we can't control. We thought we'd have a more rapid ramp in our sales and our profitability and be able, three years ago, we had a forecast of visibility, we thought we'd be putting much more money to the bottom line. Instead, we've put more money into hiring people, we've put more money into equipment and, and preparing ourselves to launch our own product lines, which is very expensive and it's about an 18-month acquisition process to get customers to accept your new products. So this is a very, very challenging business that takes a very long time. We're also facing complete disaggrade in the medical industry with what's going on politically, tariff situations, all of our raw materials were coming out of Germany with a German stainless steel. We had a, a plant in Pennsylvania blow up and lose two of their smelting furnaces for US, US steel. Our prices and fluctuations are just unpredictable and unmappable. And so we're not where we hoped we were going to be three years ago. And that's just the, the fact that we are continuing to grow, we are continuing to hire, and we are continuing to invest in Beach Street and Laramie.
So that is prevalent in everybody's business, all of those things that you stated. Those things were a reality could have been when we talked three years ago. And in exchange for not having utilities then, this was clearly known and clearly talked about. When do we get DMTI to be able to pay its own way? When does it not require the Albany County to front some of the costs? You're a mature business, five years in, most small businesses don't last two years, right? So please tell me what's going to change now if we were to vote for your request between now and three years? Or are you going to come back to us in three years and say, yeah, it's really, just a really difficult place out there for us, you're going to have to fund us some more?
No, I would, I would not want to do that. And as we've talked about, this goes into the, the whole part of acquiring the building as well. And I'm meeting actually on Friday with some investors to, that may be one of the agenda items that we even talk about. So as we launch our own product lines, our profit margins significantly change because we go from being a contract manufacturer that's lucky to get five to seven points to an original equipment manufacturer that should have 40 to 70 points. So the cash flow of the bottom line, as we gain traction in our product lines, we believe is going to absolutely make us self-sufficient and be able to grow. And it's been five years and coming that we've had this vision, it just is taking a long time to acquire. a long time to acquire those customers that want our, that see our vision as well. And medical moves at a glacial pace. It's, um, I came out of the electronics industry and you were running out new products every four months to six months. Medical industry is years in a product cycle. So it's, um, it's been a challenge and, uh, we've been successful in meeting that challenge. And we think we'll be able to continue to grow.
Just the, the final follow-up question on this, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, if you're talking about buying the building, um, it seems like paying utilities is a small, small part of that.
Buying the building would be fully having investors on board, which we do not have today. And our lease expires on the, on the fifteenth. So the urgency on this is we, nothing changes until there's an investor involved. And I cannot predict when an investor is going to get, uh, signed upon. We've been working with investors for over a year and it's not happened yet.
Some of the, those same points were made three years ago. I remember the meeting and, uh, I have to tell you, I'm going to vote no on, on the changes you requested. At some point, DMTI has to fly on its own and we have a duty to the businesses in, that we do not subsidize, to ask you to be a, a D, a business that can support itself. Um, five years on us, I'm not sure if you came from the business incubator at UW. Um, but if you did, there was some more subsidies there. This body, my job, I believe, is not to pick winners and losers. It's to subsidize businesses. Odd infinitum. It's to say, hey, this is a goal. You gotta get there or you're, or you're just not going to work for us. Um, and that's just my pers- perspective on it.
I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. It's, um, I mean, it's, it's directly will impact employment. Um, there's not many other levers I have. If we, if we don't have some, no.
It seems that world's going to come if, if this is what you're down to, if you're down to utilities. I run a nonprofit where we give our work away. And we would never ask the county to cover our, uh, utilities.
It's, it's five thousand or six thousand dollars a month, yes, for that thing. And I don't want to be in that position, but I'm here in front of you now.
My fish.
Uh, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Goosar. I, I'm a business owner and have been for the last twenty years. Have you considered changing a business model for profitability?
We absolutely are. That's bringing our products to market. Again, that, that takes years to do in the medical industry. It's not an overnight thing. It doesn't happen with, with a blink of an eye. You know, if you build it, they don't just come. You have to spend an enormous amount of time and effort and resources building it.
No, and I want to make it perfectly clear. I've never done business with your company professionally or personally. I've never made a dime off your company. Be at the county. Um, so I, there's just no place outside of UW in this town or in this state, I think, that would agree to the terms of this contract, private or public. Um, I, I would have to echo again that I'm going to vote no for the change.
Again, sorry to hear that.
Um, I've, I'm very supportive of business development. And I feel that when we made the last, um, lease agreement, that we were generous in what we did. And I feel that we need to go forward with the lease agreement as it was agreed upon at the last signing.
Good.
Good. Any other comments?
So what about the section four point two on being responsible for, uh, repair of glass, screens, doors, locks, physical parts of the building that seem to be more in the building owner's purview than ours.
Jennifer did. I'll speak to that. Normally on a commercial contract or a commercial lease, the property itself and the interior is the tenant's responsibility. And the parking lot or the exterior would be the owner's responsibility. So maintenance, siding, roofing, HVAC, which is already, I believe, in here. Yeah, um, you, usually the, if the interior is damaged, it's usually at the tenant's.
I, I agree if the interior is damaged, but the way that this is written doesn't delineate that. So if somebody throws a rock through a window, I'm responsible.
Jennifer.
Hey. I would echo what that said. It's, that's usually, I mean, we can.
If, if it was damaged, malicious damage, it's going to be an insurance claim either on your part or our part. We understand that. That's that we're not trying to assign liability to you for anything that happens on the public side of things. We, we, we nor you can control what damage occurs from outside the structure.
I mean, vines and window coverings and light bulbs, fine. That's pretty straightforward.
I think it's just to maintain what's there. We're not looking for beautification or improvements where.
It, it's replacement and repair is the, the words that are used.
Well, if it was damaged.
And that's where I'm. So if it's damaged due to no fault of our own, would that be then the county or is it us? Well, door is both.
Well, so if it's damaged from the inside, that's, that's one scenario. If it's damaged from the outside, that's another.
Okay, it doesn't delineate that though, that's.
So Jennifer. Hey.
Can we add at no fault to the tenant or add, not no fault, but if the damage occurs at, from no fault of the tenant?
Yes. Do you want it just to be exterior, um, glass and doors? I mean, locks as well.
I can tell you right now that building has almost none of the original locks inside of it because it's been so changed up that.
Agreed. So do we, I mean, we can change it to say that replace, replacement and play, repair of all exterior glass screens, doors and doors.
Or the tenant agrees to restore it to condition as it was acquired.
You, you haven't made any changes to those. So however, however it was received, you know, five years.
Yeah, that's kind of a, I mean, that's kind of a funky.
Yep, I was, so I mean, we could change it to be that the replacement and repair of exterior glass screens and doors is the county's responsibility. And interior doors, glass screens, locks, light bulbs, windows, um, window parts are tenant responsibility. If that is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so you're just delineating between exterior and interior damage. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I like that better, but I also think that there needs to be, I like your wording about no fault of the tenant. Somebody, right, shoves the front door open and it smacks around in the wind and breaks.
Right.
Now, the county shouldn't be paying for that, right? You guys should be paying.
Unless they open it from the outside, it gets jerked out of their hand and that's.
And these are legitimate things that do.
I'm, I can certainly be amenable to the discussion here that that all outside is separate from inside.
So I changed four point two to say replacement and repair of all exterior glass screens, door, screens and doors is the responsibility, we'll say doors, glass. I believe there are screens on the.
There's no screen screen.
Glass and windows. Um, so replacement and repair of all exterior glass windows and doors is the responsibility of the county if such damage occurs at no fault of the tenant. Right? And then the rest of the section renumbers. Replacement and repair of locks, light bulbs, window coverings and we'll take that out. Um, and window coverings are less seized responsibility. Is that what this report has to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can put that forward and then it will be up to you and your board to determine whether that's a meaningful for your conditions.
Okay.
Okay. I have made that change. I will email it out to everybody. So. And it will be available for signature on our end today.
So this will be tabled?
No, no, we can vote.
Okay, if it's, if you just make the motion to approve it with the discussing.
Our end of the agreement? Yeah. So I move that we approve the commercial lease as amended, um, by the county attorney, um, between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Disruptive Med Tech LLC for three, eight, two, one Beach Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. One other thing I did want to bring up that I don't know if you're aware of is, um, we've had a number of fire inspections lately in that building. Uh, they stopped counting at ten deficiencies. So, um, we need to have, uh, some attention paid on the interior of the safety of the building. Um, the, the emergency lighting's not working and other, other things that are pretty structural to the building, so.
Anthony is working on those things. I believe you've been in contact with him or somebody has been. Cause he has ordered exit lights and has been doing things. I would say if you have the copy of the reports, make sure they get sent to our building maintenance and we will get it taken care of.
Yeah, Doug, Doug takes care of that stuff. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item nine of the regular agenda, present for approval for final acceptance of the road and bridge yard side gate project. And direct the clerk to advertise for the final payment to SWI Incorporated, the balance of three thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents due on the forty-first day following the first advertisement or the first advertising. Final cost of the contract was sixty-three thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. Rod, huh, hello. You don't look at all like Rod. How are you, Jake?
I'm doing well. Commissioners, this item is just to finalize the, uh, the road and bridge, um, yard slide gate. Uh, the bid was sixty-three, one ninety and that's what the final cost was. Um, we're holding retainage as required by any public project and we re- are required to advertise and that's what this is and after that is done with you. I move that, uh, we approve the final acceptance of the road and bridge yard slide gate project and directly advertise for final payment to SWI Inc. for the balance of three thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents due on the forty-first day following the first advertisement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, Jake. Item ten, present for approval, the change order request to design and installation of solar rays on courthouse and five oh one East Iverson project and direct the chairperson to sign the change order request in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Jake, you don't look like Bailey either.
She's right there though. But so this is just a, um, this was a requirement after the fact that we found out about that Rocky Mountain Power required a meter upgrade. Um, and so I'm requesting, or I'm suggesting, recommending that this change order request be approved to Creative Energies for the value of that change.
This is just two hand, two hundred amp breaker?
Uh, yeah, they had to modernize it and I don't know the details of, of everything that was involved, but it wouldn't. Rocky Mountain Power would not let them hook up the solar arrays to that or with that current meter. So it had to be upgraded.
I'll move that we approve the change order request. The design installation, solar ray on the courthouse. Project and direct the chairperson to sign the change order requiring the amount of two thousand, two hundred and thirty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eleven of the regular agenda, present for approval notice of award for the SAR solar project for the SAR solar panel project to D L Electric in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven dollars, one hundred thirty-seven, four hundred dollars and direct the chairperson to sign on Jake.
So again, this is for the SAR solar panel project. Um, we had our, um, RFP out. We received two bids. D L Electric was one thirty-seven, four hundred. Creative Energies was two hundred and eight ninety-four. They both provided, um, submittals, um, and both were relatively lacking in the requirements. Um, D N L Electric's proposal was considerably shorter. They just referenced that they acknowledge and accept the terms set forth in section six and six and section two and they generally followed our submittal process. Um, Creative Energies, uh, proposal was significantly more robust. It had a lot of pictures. It had a lot of other things in it. That the D N L didn't, uh, but due to the price difference and the benefit to the county kind of what's in the best interest of the project, um, in history with Creative Energies. I'm recommending the award to D N L Electric.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, did D L Electric have any work with Blue Sky? They had done it before, do you know?
I am not sure, but I did call them and asked them that they were on board to help Bailey with any of the grant funding stuff. And he said, we, we've done stuff like that. We can definitely help you provide information for you and, and work through that process.
Perfect, because it did not want it to fall to us.
Right, yeah, no, and that was. Yeah, yeah, Bailey said the same thing.
As you well know.
Yeah, yeah, so he, um, did state that they would help us. And it's a smaller firm and, uh, there's only one guy to talk to that answers the phone every time. Um, and so I feel confident with, that with the difference in price, I can manage it even if it's trouble, um, that I don't expect it to be.
Still put.
We can. Cause I, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Well, Madam Chair, uh, I, uh, move that we approve the notice to award for the SAR solar projects, panel project to D L Electric in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars and direct the chairperson to sign.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twelve, present for approval application for the US Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program A L N number two zero point nine four three for Skyline Road thirtieth and I eighty overpass planning projects in the amount not to exceed two million, five hundred dollars. Jake and Bailey.
Nice, Jake. So back in March, I brought this item before you. I was, I, they had problems with their portal. Then they ended up pulling it. So I actually did apply, but they didn't accept any applications at that time. Um, things realized was last couple of weeks, couple of months, and now here we are, six months later. Um, this funding has been released again. They've changed some of the rules on it. Um, which is great for us because now we could to apply for a little more funding. Um, so when I brought this to you in March, we had cut our project down just to be skyline, just to be the county's portion. Now, with us being able to apply for more funding, I, we did talk to Jake. We decided to bring it back up to the original thirty street overpass against skyline for the planning portion. Um, there's also a lot more money, twice as much money available this year as there was last year in this funding. So, um, this is the same project I've brought to you multiple times. I am like determined to find funding for this at this point. So, but Jake had, we, I have kept Jake's guys kind of working on some of the stuff because the right away pieces, you don't find grant funding for. They want it completed prior to applying for almost anything. Um, so Jake will fill you in on that, but then this, if we're awarded with this, um, the hope then is that we would go for some more federal dollars to help with the construction portion. That's, this is rural and tribal, so, um, pretty much all of Wyoming is considered a rural tribal. Um, but it's very specific on what is, but the whole goal is to help these rural tribal areas get to some of these bigger projects in the future. So hopefully we can then apply if we get those. Uh, we can apply for then more project in the, or that construction piece in the future for more of these construction for this project.
This was, in March, this was seven hundred and fifty thousand was the ask. Is that okay?
Yeah, so because they, they doubled the amount that they're awarding, their, their max. Yeah, so because they, they doubled the amount that they're awarding, their, their max has increased too. I think we came in at two. Yeah, some of the criteria is, I mean, again, we had the funding freeze and everything that's happened since then and even with some other items I have on today's agenda, we're seeing those changes go through DOT at this point. So we are able to ask for more. I wanted to bring it back to the original project. The city is on board. I have an confirmation email from Janine, but they're on board to partner with us on this because thirtieth street really is theirs and we would have to be a partnership on this. Big, this bigger project and then a portion of Skyline is theirs as well. So, but yes, two point five is what I asked. What, oh, yes, why, why not as well? Two point five is the maximum. I think you, you need a bit.
Two point three five somewhere there.
Yeah, two point three five as well, I think we'll.
For that, and that was to cover all of the planning phase for this project.
The design aspect, yes.
And is there any purchases of easements or rightways or any of that involved in this?
No, we can't include that in the grant. So that's why Jake's continued, Jake and his team continue to work on some of these right away pieces because I can't include these in the grant. They want it put like those pieces completed prior to even applying for construction funding. So, but it's still a piece we have to have.
Right.
So they have continued on it because in the end, this is something that the community needs. So we have just been paying Jake to do that still, that, that piece still. So that's a whole kind of separate piece. This would be we would, if awarded, then we would have an M O U with the city. We'd work with Y dot, Jake would take the lead on it and we'd work on those planning pieces for it. So then we could be shovel ready to then go for construction funding.
Thank you. Yeah, I move that we approve the application for the U S Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program A L N number one dot nine four three for the Skyline Road thirtieth and I eighty overpass planning project in the amount not to exceed two point five million dollars. Second.
I will abstain from this and for those of you that don't know, you deserve to know why I'm abstaining and that I own property that is directly involved with this project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item thirteen, present for approval, U S Department of Transportation grant agreement under the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program in the amount of one million one hundred and twenty thousand plus through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight for the purpose of creating an evidence-based safety action plan. Bailey and.
So eleven months later, I finally have this agreement and I'm super excited. But it did, it took eleven months to get this agreement. There were delays on the federal side that changed our agreement quite a bit, actually. They cut a lot out. But this is to do with the safety action plan as well as some, what do we call them? Speed study?
Yeah, it's all part of a safety action plan. We've got to do a, a speed study. We're gonna do pull all the collision data from Y dot and all of that, kind of do a, a whole study with the city inside the city limits and in county as a kind of a comprehensive safety action plan that then sets up the opportunity to apply for other grants to potentially repair and fix other issues in the county and the city.
So when we applied for this funding over a year ago at this point, it was to be a partnership with the city. They will be putting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars match and we're putting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars match in. The M O U with the city will be on your next meeting agenda. But I have this, so I really hope you approve that. But yeah, it's been a long time waiting for this agreement.
Does this go hand in hand with the ten-year public transportation study that the city's doing at all?
No, not really. So I, us as a county, we really wanted to apply for this because we need this plan to then apply for additional funding. In order for us to be successful, we felt that we, if we bring the city in, it would make it a stronger application, which it does. And then both parties can benefit from this plan. But I do not believe it's part of that transportation plan. But that speed study, I've been talking to Chief Brown because he has an idea. So well, after we have the M O U side, we'll be sitting down with the city to talk about all the details on how this is gonna work.
I move that we approve the U S Department of Transportation Grant Agreement under the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Safe Seat Streets and Roads for All Grant Program in the amount of one million one hundred and twenty thousand through June twenty-eight, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item fourteen, present for consideration Mitchell variance request V A R dash zero one dash two five. Hi Joe.
Morning Commissioners. All right, the applicant and owner is Jason Mitchell. His address is thirty-eight West Street. His request is to have the ability to subdivide within the ranchette zoning district with a smaller, with a lot smaller than ten acres. There were some reviews. Holly Dyer, the Laboring Rivers Conservation District Resource Specialist commented on erosion, soil degradation, and reclamation of disturbed areas. Her full comments can be seen in the review section. The applicant has read a complete application including all required documentation. The applicant's asking for a variance from the L B County zoning resolution in order to be able to subdivide his ranchette zone property under the required density of five acres per lot. While staff is certainly sympathetic to the application, to the applicant situation, staff believes that granting of this variance would constitute a grant of special privilege which other properties in Alloquat subdivision or any properties throughout the county which are slightly too small to subdivide do not enjoy. If the applicant's request for a variance is granted, the applicant will be required to go through the major subdivision process which is laid out in the Albany County planning and subdivision resolution. And there are two different recommendations in front of you. The staff recommendation is to deny the application. And the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation is to approve the application. Whichever way you choose to go, please read out the findings of fact and conclusions of law and the motion. Each of those is presented separately in the staff report.
Give me the language one more time, Joe.
Uh, for which one?
For the finding of fact and.
Uh.
Or we'll, we'll get it straight.
It's in the staff report, yeah.
Joe, I got a question or two. What, what is the size of the lot, actually?
Uh, it's about nine six, yeah.
Nine point one six?
Yeah.
I understand the discussion from the applicant. Is that applicant available or somebody representing?
I don't see him here.
Okay. Was there, how to work, do you know, Doug, was the first person purchased the property?
I don't know that, no.
And, and the person is a state agent?
I, I'm not sure what he is.
Yep, at the acre. I don't know where it's at, but it's listed as J M Construction and Real Estate LLC.
Yeah.
Oh, but that doesn't necessarily mean he's an agent.
Right, yeah.
He just might be for his land. I don't, he's in construction.
Well, there's Jason Mitchell with that, listed an acre as.
Oh, okay.
As an agent, so.
Do you wanna?
I, I, is this because it was ten acres before the road went through and then after the road went through or was this because it looks like it's a corner lot? Don't look at Matt.
This is a really, this is a, it's messy, messy, very messy.
This isn't just a clerical error then?
I think, uh, just for the purposes of transparency would be better for Chelsea to explain this.
Thanks, Matt.
No, I'm more than happy to explain what happened. So this plat is from nineteen seventy-seven. The boundary lines of the lots actually go to the center line of all of the roads. So nineteen seventy-seven till now, we have been taxing all of these lots, including the roadways. Okay, I, my staff and I have done a full review. I have taken the stance that because on the plat it says the roads are dedicated for public use, that the property owners should not be paying taxes on this. So for assessment purposes, I am no longer taxing them on the roads. So in the case of Mr. Mitchell, yes, previously he was being taxed on the roads and now he is not. It's twenty twenty-six moving forward and I have adjusted the entire subdivision and I actually mailed out letters to all of the owners last week, so.
Is that the only subdivision that's gonna probably be affected by?
I don't know, so.
Okay.
I.
The discussion, I know.
Yeah, I am in the process of seeing how many plats we actually have in the county. How many plats? Cause this plot also, it doesn't list lot sizes. When you go through all of the deeds, none of them say lot size. So there is no record of what the true actual size of these lots are. So I am interpreting the plat to the best of my ability and what I think is fair for assessment purposes. I don't think they should be taxed on roads that they can't build on. So that's my stance. And they, it's not like they can close the road off. They're for public use. They can't put gates up. They can't stop traffic from going through. So that's why I'm not gonna tax them. It's gonna take me a long time to go through every plat in the county to see if we're taxing roads or not. I think this is a rare instance. It's an older plat, so that's where I'm gonna start is with these old ones and move forward, but it's gonna take my staff a long time to go through that.
Do you know, Joe, maybe this question is for you or maybe Matt, are there actual survey pins in this subdivision? So there are lot boundaries and corners delineated or was that not something that was done in subdivisions?
I am not entirely sure about that. I know for this lot in particular, there are, because we require that now. So that's when, you know, the assessor's office had it at like ten point two. He came in and talked to us. We said, yeah, sure, go get started or whatever. As soon as we got the survey back, it said nine point one. We were like, oh. Uh, so now we're here. So this lot in particular has been surveyed. It came back at nine point whatever and and now we're here.
And it begs to, to reason, right? That it is the buyer's responsibility to understand what they're buying. Irrespective of what's on the assessor's map.
Yeah, and I will also say like both the assessor's map and planning map, we have a thing that you have to click okay, that these are reference only. So you know, you do your best and fortunately sometimes it happens.
So got involved in this quite a long time ago. And so Mr. Mitchell talked with both, both departments and both department, departments at the time that he talked to you agreed that that was ten point, what, one or whatever acres. And so he based in talking to the government officials that that was ten acres and he could go ahead. He did that before he spent a lot of money. And then he had, after you had, after the two different agencies or departments had said it was ten acres, then he got the survey done. He wouldn't have spent the money on the survey if he had known it was less than nine acres or less than ten acres, but it was ten acres with the road. And I believe that the public should not be harmed by, and I'm gonna use the word mistake, that's, there's other words to use, but maybe nicer words, of the government. And I certainly support the variance on this one piece because it is very unique and he should not, he should not be punished for what he was told initially.
I guess my question is, what was his original intent? Was it to divide this into two parcels?
Two parcels. I think that's always what it's been.
Okay, that just seems really odd because there's a structure and everything dead smack in the middle of this property.
Yeah. I think the other lot is supposed to be like two point five or something like that.
Oh, so he's just wanting to section off a smaller chunk, not equal.
Yeah, might be, not equal.
Period. I just, I hear what you're saying and I have some sympathy for him. I don't know Mr. Mitchell at all. But in the end, the buyer is responsible for knowing what they buy. And I know the disclaimer that you put on the stuff, yeah, I read it as I go. And so I think that needs to be taken seriously. Unfortunately, we had ten point two on our stuff. But he had to buy it somehow. And if he didn't use a title company, then it's buyer beware and buyer, and if the title company probably was ten point two, well then he has an issue with the title company and he can pursue that outside of this body. I'm not as supportive of the variance because I know that this is not maybe his problem, but it is in the essence, it is his problem and now he has, he didn't get nothing for the survey. He now officially knows where his property boundaries are. And so he paid for what he had, got. And so I just feel like give an inch, right? Then the next person in that same subdivision, so subdivision says, I need to do the same. And that changes the character of that subdivision.
But I have to say that he did do his due diligence because he talked to two experts. And they told him it was ten plus acres. And I, I still support variance under these circumstances.
And I guess going forward to fix that he kind of
is precipitating.
Alluded to going forward is like, especially in Alloquat, we're gonna require the survey first before we can even tell you yes or no. So I guess either way, they're gonna have to get a survey.
Right, but that was not the case.
Right.
Before. And he should not be punished for that.
And Joe, I don't mean to tell you your job, but I would say to do that in every subdivision until Chelsea knows exactly what we have out there.
I mean, the newer ones should be fine. We have, you know, our rules have changed. Our subdivision regulations have greatly improved since nineteen seventy-something. Including like putting the actual lot size on the lot, which is like pretty simple. But, you know, yeah.
Was this, the structural structure on this property, it looks like it's built in two thousand and twelve?
I don't recall.
Okay, because I bought a property that's the very same year and the seller even disclosed the fences are where the fences are, but that is not your property line. I didn't need a survey to know everything was screwed up. That, that brief conversation did it. I have to agree. I mean, if you're gonna parcel it off, I it's a technicality, but do we fix it by going down to nine acres or do we have to draw the line? If he was doing a fifty fifty split, I'd say absolutely, let's go ahead with the variance. But if we're just chunking off a a parcel to build on somewhere else, I, I don't think I'm in agreement. Well, I will move to deny the Mitchell variance request V A R zero one dash two five. And.
Do you have the recommendation? I have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's on your staff report.
Yeah, so the findings of fact, all of anything that says, anything under the staff recommendation needs to be read. And it's like a page and a half.
Okay, so, well, let's get, well, get to reading. I wish I would have had. Staff, so wait, staff recommendation, the applicant has provided an application for the request. Is that where I'm at? I, I, yeah, I've got. For the variance which includes the information, materials and statements.
I've done it.
Yeah, that's what I got, Joe. Thanks all.
I've got.
Okay, so.
As I say, Pete wants to finish with this motion. I've got it on paper right here, if that's helpful.
Yep. Okay. And what page?
Page five.
Page five. And you want to start everything under staff recommendation?
Yep.
Okay. The applicant has provided an application for the requested variance which includes the information, materials and statements required by the Albany County. The applicant has provided an application for the requested variance, which includes the information, materials and statements required by the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter five, section fourteen. The applicant has complied with the notice requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter five, section five. The applicant's and staff's response to the variance requirements and staff analysis provided herein are incorporated as the findings of facts. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter five, section fourteen. But has not met the standards required for granting a variance under sub paragraph fourteen. Point F, point two and fourteen point F, point four, deny the vigil variance request, V A R dash zero one dash two five. Based on the applicant's failure to show that the following standards will be met. Bullet point one, chapter five, section fourteen, comma, four, comma, two. The granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on use of other properties in the district. Granting the variance would constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on the other properties abilities to subdivide in the ranchet district. Bullet point two, chapter five, section fourteen, comma, F, comma, four, the granting of the variance is justified for one or more of the following reasons. A strict interpretation or enforcement of the development standard results in practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent. With the purposes of the resolution. B, exception or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the site of the variance that do not apply generally. To other properties in the same district, or C, strict interpretation or enforcement of the development standard will deprive the applicant of privileges. Enjoyed by other party owners in the same district, or the variance will bring the applicant into substantial parity with other property owners in the same district. The variance is not justified for the following reasons, strict enforcement of the ranchet density standard results in difficulty and hardship. Which is a necessary purpose of the Albany County zoning resolution and controlling development. Density. The property's inability to meet the density standard for the subdivision within a ranchet zoning district is not exception or extraordinary within the zoning district. Or in the, or the Alloquat subdivision. Strict enforcement of the density standards would not deprive the applicant of a privilege enjoyed by others in the same district. As no other property which cannot meet the density standards enjoys the ability to subdivide. And the variance would not bring the applicant into a substantial party with other property owners in the same district. Particularly within the Alloquat subdivision, because the applicant's inability to subdivide is similar to other properties in the ranchet district and the Alloquat. Subdivision. That's it.
Yep.
And your motion was to deny based on staff report, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Item fifteen, present for consideration, Morris zoning district application. Z D A dash zero six dash two five, Joe. Good morning again.
All right, the applicant and owners are Keith and Renee Morris. Uh, the address is a hundred North Fork Road, their request is to change the zoning from ranchette to small lot residential. Uh, there were some reviews, Holly Dyer, Laramie Rivers Conservation District Resource Specialist. Commented on erosion soil degradation and reclamation of disturbed areas, her full comments can be seen in the review section. Uh, the applicant has provided a complete application, including all required documentation. The planning department believes that the proposed zoning district amendment generally follows suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. This property is currently zoned ranchette and has changed to small lot residential. Is compatible with the existing land use of surrounding properties. This property is going through the zoning district amendment process because the planning department has an open enforcement case for having. Two dwellings on a ranchette zone property at four point zero eight acres, which does not meet the allowed density. And once again, there are two different recommendations in front of you, the staff recommendation is to approve the application, planning its owning. Planning and zoning commission's recommendation is to deny the application. Whichever way you choose, please read out the findings of fact, conclusions of law and the motion, each of those is presented separately in the staff report.
I don't have a lot to say about it, I think this is hearing something that. This didn't happen by accident.
Agreed. Are, are you needing, anybody needing more questions?
No, I don't.
I'd like motion, please.
I, I'm, I'm trying to scroll through to find.
It's page.
I have it. Morris zoning district amendment application, Z D A dash six dash twenty five. Due to the findings effect and conclusions of law, uh, the findings necessary for approval and applicant's response referenced in this report do not address all the necessary findings. The applicant is not proceeding in accordance with and is not in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. And the Albany County, um, zoning unanimously voted to recommend the board of the county commissioners deny the Morris zoning district amendment. Z D A dash six dash two five based upon applicant's failure to comply with chapter three, section five, period C, period six. Period, lower case C. Period, vote aye, uh, the A C Z R Albany County zoning regulations and do not generally follow the comprehensive plan.
Second, thank you.
Yes, thank you, that was a mouthful there, um, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, now. They. There was requests from the people earlier today to, for us to move forward on. Taking care of the problem. So. This can't be sold as a. To. Two residents, actually. And. What are we gonna do about that?
Oh, um. So, uh, typical actions that we take for enforcing on the zoning resolution.
Okay.
Um, we'll need to file a complaint.
All right, so for the people that are here in that room that are concerned about this, can you give a little bit more explanation on that? And about the timeframe and that kind of thing? I know, now I'm getting the dagger stripped.
No, I, I understand, um. So. Has a notice of violation been issued? Uh, so generally, we issue a notice of violation, um, outlining. Uh, the nature of the violation, the options for, um, remedying the violation, uh, this. Well, generally, one of the options is to, um. Seek a zoning district amendment or whatever. Uh, zoning certificates might be necessary in order to. Make the use, uh, conforming with the zoning resolution, uh, but in this instance, that has already. I guess been exhausted, um, so we would just go straight to demand, um. I guess for remediation, which we would need to. I guess, uh, I would need to consult with, uh, the planning department on exactly, um, what that request would be, so. It's not immediate.
So in other words, we'll work on it, don't hold your breath.
Or don't hold your breath that it will be a quick process.
Right.
But our office can work with planning and we can certainly get started on the necessary.
I guess I would also say that any fines that are levied, that's through the court system, that's.
Right.
Yeah, that's, this is completely civil.
Correct. I guess through a civil litigation process, which is not. Quick, right.
But I, thank you, that's what I wanted for everybody to hear from you, Matt.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just have, oh, I'm sorry, question.
Yes.
Um, Jan Almany. Um, I just wondered, are they gonna be able to continue to rent this as a V R B O? In perpetuity against. What building? Because the building's not in compliance. Are they gonna be able to continue to rent it?
We do not regulate short term rentals, um, through the zoning resolution, uh. Nor do we have really any jurisdiction over. Like V R B O as a private company, um.
But we can, can be stated, we can stop using it as a dwelling.
Yeah, that's, I mean, what it is, is that this needs to. Um, cease being used as a dwelling, because the fact that this dwelling is not off limits. Uh, as to the V R B O aspect.
Okay, but if we stop the use of that building. What, what do we need to do, what need, what are we gonna need to do?
We can state in the notice of violation that any use as a dwelling is off limits.
And?
I believe for profit.
I mean, any, any use as a dwelling.
Oh, any use.
Whether it's a rental, whether it's.
It can't be family staying above the garage, okay.
It's not allowed, so, um, any use as a dwelling is off limits.
And all of those additional things would be addressed in the complaint process, there's nothing we can do outside of that complaint process.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one more question, Terry, just follow up. The covenants this county does not enforce, but the homeowners can enforce.
Those contracts, those are private contractual obligations.
So, but if that system is too slow or too. Onerous for people. The property owners are not without their own ability to remedy the situation.
Yes, and I speak, yes, though. You know, there is a misunderstanding in this county about the homeowners association in, um. In the North Fork. So a little bit of a story, I hope it's not too long, when, um, the Sanders established those subdivisions. They did not establish a homeowners association. They just put in each individual original lot deed, the covenants. We've been told by several attorneys that because he didn't establish a homeowners association. We have no standing to enforce any of those covenants. But one of the covenants said that the. Grantees agreed to join with the other owners to maintain the roads. And so, when there was a few owners in that subdivision, they got together. Uh, to maintain the roads and they established the North Fork Owners Association. Um, it became apparent, that was done in nineteen seventy, it became apparent. That, uh, that association was not legally recognized. In Wyoming unless they were incorporated, in nineteen eighty one, we incorporated. So. The homeowners association in North, uh, in the, the North Fork subdivisions exists for one purpose. And that's to maintain the roads, we have no authority whatsoever over the, to enforce the covenants.
Would be, it would be illegal civil action.
The enforcement would be neighbor neighbor.
Right, well.
Any other, any other comments or questions? Matt, thank you, thank you, Joe.
Oh, Joe's got one more. Four hundred and sixteen.
Thank you.
We finalized fifteen.
We did finalize fifteen. That's why I was thinking, Joe. Item sixteen, present for consideration, Pete Lean and Sons zoning district amendment. Application Z D A dash zero seven dash two five.
All right, the applicant owner is Pete Lean and Sons, their address is seven ninety two Jonathan Corey Hall Road. Uh, the request is to change the zoning from act to industrial, there were some reviews, Holly Dyer, Laramie Rivers Conservation District Resource. Resource Specialist. Commented on erosion soil degradation and reclamation of disturbed areas, her full comments can be seen in the review section. Taylor McCourt, Y dot district one, traffic and air, commented on utilities within the right of way. His full comments can be seen in the review section, the applicant has provided a complete application, including all required documentation. The planning department believes that the proposed zoning district amendment generally follows suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. This property is currently zoned ag and has changed industrials compatible with the existing land use of surrounding properties. The findings necessary for approval and applicant responses, reference in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has met the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with and as in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. The planning and zoning commission unanimously voted to recommend the board of county commissioners approve the Pete Lean and Sons zoning district amendment, Z D A zero seven two five. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
I have nothing. I move that we approve.
Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I apologize, sorry.
Uh, so I know the verbiage needs to be correct and I'm gonna screw this up. But I move to approve the, uh. Pete Lean and Sons zoning district amendment application, Z D A dash zero seven dash two five. Incorporate is staff analysis.
Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact and conclusions of law, as stated in the staff report.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
As Joe stated.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll get it written down, Joe.
Present.
Already written down.
Seventeen.
Do you know how many pages I have open in front of me right now?
Item seventeen of the regular agenda, present for approval application. To the Wyoming Department of Transportation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, high risk rural road. Funding for the delineator projects on Fallow Lane, Harmony Lane, Hanson Lane. Lake Hattie Road, Roger Canyon Road and Dutton Creek. And direct the chairperson to sign the application, resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one three. An additional supporting documents. Bailey and Jake.
Commissioner, so I actually just sent you an email this morning, I just got an answer that I was waiting for in regards to indirect cost. So the total amount of the project, including that indirect cost will be a hundred and six thousand and seven hundred dollars. We will be collecting, I'm hoping it's like ten percent indirect cost on this project, um. And, yeah.
Yeah, we're just putting delineators up similar to what we did. Do at Soldier Springs with other, all the paved roads in the county, um. It'll include just the flexible delineators at an interval and then at, uh. At each, um, approach and we'll have a contractor do all that work and the excess materials, I guess, will be not finished.
Do you need the amount in the motion?
I don't, no.
I move that we approve the application for the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty six, high risk rural road funding. For the delineator project on Fallow Lane, Harmony Lane, Hanson Lane, Lake Hattie Road, Rogers Canyon Road and Dutton Creek Road. For chairperson to sign the application. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one three and additional supporting documents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eighteen, discuss future of rec board funding, Bailey.
All right, Commissioner, so I've had some, I've had multiple meetings, um, with Michael Bork, the. New Parks and Art Director at the city and then Tristan Green, who's the CFO at the school district. The three of us are in agreement, we were not happy with how things went this year, um, they seem to be messier than they ever have been. One of the things we're working on is changing the application from a P, I, the application that the county uses. Was based off of a city application and I've made some changes, we don't. I thought some of the, were the questions that the city had was not necessary for us, so I did cut it down a little bit. Um. But we decided, the three of us decided we can make it even shorter, so we're working on that and it's gonna be a little form. And everything should be smooth there. I did express my frustration though that the way the county was basically treated this year, all the county projects, I was not happy about it. Um, they completely waved off the fairgrounds, which. In our, in the bylaws of rec board, we have every right to ask for any construction work, roofs are construction. And we have every right to do so, and they just completely waved it off. Um, they get a little nitpicky sometimes with some of the items that are requested by. Um. The applicants. So one of the things Tristan, Michael and I kind of were talking about is the city actually has a contract with the recreation board, well, school district, actually. To get a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'd have to double check that number, every year, right off the top of what is available for rec board. Tristan mentioned, she's like, well, why couldn't the county have one? To. Fund then just the fairgrounds and the library, because we do, we don't have a lot of recreation, but we do have two. And I, um, there, in the past, it's never really been a problem, there's been money. And now we're coming into times where there isn't. Um. What I would want to, what I want to discuss is, are you guys okay if I push? To get a contract with the rec board, fiscal district or the county to then. Just fund the fairgrounds and the library and then make those decisions yours on what projects need to be done that year, or you can even hold it if you need to. Um, then that would, that would then have the fairgrounds and the library not apply for the rec board funding every year. It would just be something off the top, I'm not talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yeah, we'd all love that, but I don't think that's reasonable. Um. My other recommendation, or what I would like to do is. If they don't want to. Talk about making it a little better, um, but the county do what, does walk away from this. It is a lot of work, um, you guys then rank these every, after you hear the presentations and they completely disregard them. Um, you guys then rank these every, after you hear the presentations, and they completely disregard them. Then it is a waste of your time, it's a waste of my time. Um, if the county were to walk away, we do have applicants that could then absolutely apply through the city. That's not a problem. And then let this be in the school district handle it. But it is a lot of work. Um, and I think that the county is not being treated fair, and I told Tristan that I'm not happy. You guys sat through presentations that were very long this year, um, which absolutely we can cut down in the future, but I think something needs to change here. Um, and if you guys have a better idea, please let me know. I do have a meeting later this month with the rec board to talk about this, to talk about our new application that we've put together. Um, but I just think there, things are stuck in their ways a little bit and um, they're just it could be better. So, any comments, questions?
Bailey, have you um asked the rec board if they're, what, how would they like to go through this long jam here? Oftentimes, I think some people either say that we don't have an idea, but we have this idea and then you can narrow down how you're working. Have you had that conversation?
We have not. So our last rec board meeting was in April. So we're coming up uh, so September, so they only meet once a quarter. So my next opportunity is September, so that's, but I wanted to talk in front of you guys to make sure I know your opinion, because I have my opinion, but it doesn't always fit with your opinion. Um, I think at least the CFO is a little nervous that if the county backs off, it is more work for her. And it is, it's, it's work for us. It's, and especially because I feel like we've made it like the way it should be. You should have, if you get money, you should have an agreement. Um, and we did, we put agreements in, we built our, we made our own application, we have them present to you guys. Then you rank them and then it seems to be completely disregarded. Um, so it
And our applicants could go through the city.
Our applicants could go through the city. Absolutely, they could.
And that process is similar.
It's the same, yeah. You gotta go through the parks, trees.
Yeah, they have the two, uh, they have one presentation they give to parks and rec, I believe, and then I think then um, Michael Bork then presents to city council based off of what those recommendations were. And city council, but yeah, there's like two layers of. But I mean, if, if you guys want to keep it the same, we will do that, but I just feel like the way that the county projects were treated this year was completely unfair. Um, there was hardly any discussion about it. And we're just unhappy.
Um, so sometimes I get confused who gets to apply for what different things. Okay, so um is the rifle range and this um trap club eligible for this money?
They are eligible for the money. Um, I guess rifle range even used to apply through the city, because I believe that the the property that they're on is owned by the city, so I think that's why they apply to the city.
I just want to know if, if they're still eligible.
So they are eligible, so they have to be.
What is the requirements as to why they apply to the city or the county?
Yes, but mostly if we choose not to go forward, that they'll still have an opportunity.
I mean, as long as
Correct.
As long as the city is not willing to pull out. Now, talking to Michael, I don't think he is at this time because he needs his money for the, uh, his recreation. So um, I don't, I, any project we have is absolutely eligible to apply through the city. There is nothing in the bylaws that says why they have to pick one sponsoring agency over the other. So um, if trap club wants to apply through um through the city, they absolutely can, even though it's, you know, uh, events taking outside.
Right, that's where, that's where I was.
Yeah, no, they, there's no rule that says who they choose.
So what happens if the city decides to pull back?
Well, then it's all in the, the school district, isn't it?
So everybody just applies to the school district?
I don't see the city, honestly. Again, they have a contract, they're, I know their contract's up for negotiation here. Um, but we've never, as long as I've been here, we've never had this problem. Our problem is because then there's less tax dollars coming in for this, for rec board. So of course you get tax cuts, then there's less money, and then you have the problems that come up. All, and now they're all servicing. So yeah, I mean, they, if somebody else wanted to apply through the city, they absolutely can. In order to apply for rec board funding, the like unwritten rule is they have to be like a nonprofit, but a nonprofit being five oh one C three. Um, rifle and trap are actually five oh one C segments. So to have some sort of that status, um, it doesn't have to be a five oh one C three to apply for it. Um, but for profits, they're trying to get it away from boosters were a huge issue this year. So again, less money, you're seeing more issues come up. So like in the applica, I, we did, we worked on the application, Brady put together the Google form and I'm supposed to get that to them this week. But some of the things that we are trying to address upfront, at least for the board, from things that we're hearing from the board is absolutely no nonprofits, shouldn't even apply, period. Boosters, they need to make some decisions on, and the, the rec board isn't making some decisions, so I'm hoping at this meeting we're gonna come to it and have some decisions made. Um, another thing that got brought up is um faith-based. We have never had that happen, but it easily could. You guys did, you guys did see it during your community partner funding this year. So I mean, there's, it's not all gonna be ironed out, it just won't, it's a work in progress, but it's a lot of work and um, on it with a board that is, can be a little difficult sometimes. And I feel sometimes that that board um, will fund the same project to one, but then the same exact project they won't fund to another entity. So it, it's hard to watch, and I can only do so much as a sponsoring agency representative um, to try to get that across.
Bailey, I don't want to tell you how to do your work, but are you so that you have a ability to have a constructive conversation at the next meeting since they meet only so formally? If you could like list those in an email if you already haven't, run it by Jennifer to get another set of eyes on it, and then submit it to Chairman Bear if she's still the chair. I don't know.
Uh, actually, I believe Janice Marshall's still technically the chair for the rec board.
Yeah, and then they can have time to digest it and then give you some direction going forward. And that way, everything's on the table, and then they know your frustrations and they can help solve your problems or.
And I believe Tristan has passed along too, because I think Tristan is a little nervous that if the county backs out, that works on her, and it is, it's worked a lot.
Yeah.
So um, I guess I just need to know, would you guys be okay if we tried to move forward with a contract and just to do then that would take fairgrounds and library out every single year? They would not apply to the rec board. And then they could, we would work on giving those up, whatever funds that year. Exactly.
I think that's a good idea.
And the rec board money we're discussing is the one mil that they're receiving.
Correct, they get one mil.
For six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
I don't remember what it was this year.
But it's, I mean, my point is it's collected countywide, so.
Yes, it is. Uh, Toner Rock River even applied this year and they hadn't in the past. Communication was a huge issue for a while. Um, so rec board finally did put it, I think something for their part.
Would they, how was that?
They, they received, yeah, it was an agreement. Um, but, but it was kind of weird, like, okay, they hadn't received funding in a while, well, neither has the fairgrounds, they hadn't really received funding in a while, and then you're you don't even talk about it. So, and construction, absolutely in the bylaws, is an okay thing. One of the things too that they're trying to get away from is because there's less money is more one-time projects, which I do, I think is, I think it's great, especially for recreation where uh, some of your non, like, your community partner funding, a lot of nonprofits, they need operations funding. So I wouldn't recommend that there, but for recreation, yeah, one-time project that you're um, putting in the ADA parking at uh rifle range, great project. One time done, and then you walk away. But that's one of the things that the rec board I do know is trying to get to, is that they don't want these requests every year for clay pigeons for trap, they don't want to see that every year, or baseballs, they don't want to see it every year. You need to find another way to fund that. But um, moving more towards one-time projects um, is what they're hoping to do. So.
I guess if they're disregarding the process the county already has in place, then yeah, something needs to change and then.
Yeah, well, they disregard what you guys have ranked, even. I mean, you guys take the, we take time out of one of your meetings for, to listen to the presentations, like the sponsors saying, and then you rank them, and then it gets disregarded. And in the past, again, we got, we got money, it wasn't a big deal. But.
Well, ultimately, they're responsible for that money, so they have the, the right to do that.
They do.
If, even if you ask for librarian, fair board funding, I would include all the other problems. One time because you're still gonna have the problems.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, so please do that.
Absolutely.
And then I would do it as soon as possible as you can, because then they give some time to think about it, and maybe they can come up with a solution for you. Because it's their money, so they get to, to help with the projects, so.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yep.
Item nineteen, present for approval, funding agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Laramie Project Graduation for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, community partner funding.
Uh, this is just another one, your community partner, project graduation came in. I believe there's just three more that are outstanding that I'm waiting on. So hopefully I can get them all on your next meeting.
I move to approve the funding agreement between Board Commissioners of Albany County and Laramie Project Graduation for fiscal year twenty-six community partners funding.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Item twenty, present for approval, energy retrofit grant contract between the Wyoming Energy Authority and Albany County, Wyoming, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six for the lighting replacements in the courthouse.
So we applied for this over a year ago with the funding freeze. It kind of got pushed to the back, and I honestly thought that the funding wasn't there. I get an email a couple of weeks ago saying, are you guys still interested? I told her yes. So here's our agreement.
Give us extra money. I'd love to do that project.
I move that we approve the energy retrofit grant contract between Wyoming Energy Authority and Albany County, Wyoming, about fifty thousand through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six for the lighting replacement in the courthouse.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item twenty-one, present for approval, amendment one to the contract between Wyoming Department of Health, Behavioral Health Division, and Albany County Board of Commissioners as governing body for the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Program in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred dollars through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six for state opioid response funding.
Bailey.
In the past, the state opioid response funding has been at least a two or three-year grant. Well, this year they kind of decided to do something a little different. They're only gonna do one year at a time and give a settlement. So this is just the first amendment for that.
I move that we approve amendment one to the contract between Wyoming Department of Health, Behavioral Health Division, and Albany County Board of Commissioners as governing body for the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Program in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred dollars through September thirtieth twenty twenty-six for state opioid response funding.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item twenty-two, present for approval, stipulated termination of the contract between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, by and through the Albany County and Prosecuting Attorney's Office and Greater Wyoming Big Brothers Big Sisters for Juvenile Diversion Services.
So um, the O J G D P um, grant that's been on a couple of meetings ago, that's through Y S A C. We had it in the beginning of the year, then they terminated it, then we got it again, mainly due to the federal funding freeze. I actually kept um, the contract with Big Brothers Big Sisters at that time. I had some, I didn't think it would last as long as it did, and it did. So this is the contract to terminate that. Um, Jennifer and I are working on the contract to then pick it back up to actually be paid from the grant now that I have hopefully everything straightened out with that grant. Um, but we need to terminate this.
Terminate one to fly for another, or use another.
Yeah. So it's just cleaner for the grant.
I moved to we uh, approve the stipulated termination of the contract between the Board of Commissioners County of Albany, Wyoming, by and through the Albany County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and we're, I mean, Big Brothers Big Sisters for juvenile diversion services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item twenty-three, award bid to Fremont Motors for the purchase and trade-in of sheriff's vehicles and direct the chairperson to sign the contract. Well, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, what you have in front of you is a bid and contract from Fremont Motors. Uh, we only received one bid and it was from Fremont Motors. Uh, the bid that came in um, is going to cover what we were asking for. Uh, they did offer us uh uh, a decent return for the trades that we have in there as well. So I believe the three vehicles that we're ordering comes out to just shy of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars with a twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar trade-in for the three old vehicles that are turning in. So it should be just under a hundred and fifty thousand.
They're all Chevy Topos?
They're all gonna be Chevy Topos, so.
We award the bid to Fremont Motors for the purchase, trade-in of sheriff vehicles and direct the chairperson to sign the contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item twenty-four, present for approval, the First Amendment to the inmate medical and mental health service provider agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and through the Albany County Sheriff's Office and Core Health for Medical Services for the Albany County Detention Center.
Yes, our contract um expires on September fourteenth, and we're still in negotiations with uh, the bidder that we had um, that we put out in June. And so to allow for time to get that finalized up, we're extending the contract, um, asking to extend the contract with Core Health for three months. So that's the amendment that you have in there, so all the services are still provided at the same cost, so. Just extends that contract from September fourteenth to November fifteenth this year.
And they're charging us a thirty-one thousand dollar transaction fee?
Yeah.
One-time transaction fee to compensate the contractor for the one-time transaction. County will pay the contractor one-time rate of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars by September, oh, in twenty twenty-one, never mind.
I was about to say that's in the, that's in the original.
How many months are they gonna clip this?
No, 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 that's in the, that part was in the original contract.
So like I said, this doesn't, so the
Yeah, so was I.
So the, then the six hundred and four thousand dollars isn't accurate either.
No.
Cause I'm not looking at the amendment.
It is not.
You're probably looking at the original.
I'm looking at the original. It's at the end, you guys, the four hundred pages here.
Sorry, it is a very lengthy contract.
Oh, no, everybody else got to it before.
Right after the cover sheet. I was, usually the amendments right after the cover sheet.
And then the original agreement's always behind it too, so that we can reference it.
The uh, the amendment is, from the way I wrote it, should be very short. It essentially just uh, outlines that the same services that are being provided are still going to be provided. And then it extends the length of the contract.
Okay, I'm, hold on, let me get this right. I move that we approve the First Amendment to the inmate medical and mental health service provider agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and through the Albany County Sheriff's Office and Core Health for Medical Services at the Albany County Detention Center.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-five, ratify equitable sharing agreement and certification form with Drug Enforcement Administration by and through the Albany County Sheriff's Office. Morning again.
Morning. This is our yearly agreement that we have with the DEA for um, asset forfeiture funds from uh, cases that are adjudicated. We have two pending cases from twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one that have been adjudicated and they're in their final stages. Um, for the DEA to uh, send funds for um those asset forfeiture agreements that we have on there. Um, but the DEA requires a basically a renewal of our, of our contract and our account every year. This is the same agreement that, that we've had in, in my time that I've been here, so.
Sheriff, can you just remind me, does that money go to the general fund or does it go to your fund?
That goes, that goes to a very specific asset forfeiture fund that's uh, specific to the sheriff's office, doesn't go to the general fund.
Thank you. I move to ratify the equitable sharing agreement and certi, certification form with the Drug Enforcement Administration by and through Albany County Sheriff's Office. Second.
All those in fair?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-six, set a special meeting to discuss specific purpose excise tax.
Will this be our joint or is this?
No, so this will be a meeting for us to finalize our projects before going to the special meeting or the work session on the fifteenth. So the um Tracy has asked for everybody to get all of their projects back to her by the tenth. Um our meeting, the tenth of September, and then their meeting, our our group meeting in Rock Rivers on the fifteenth. So I would request that we either meet on the eleventh or the twelfth. Um I think Tracy is out on the twelfth, so if we could meet on the eleventh, that would be great, gives her enough, her and I enough time to look over the uh everything that comes in. I think we probably need to rank our projects, because I think that we're probably gonna have to maybe cut, so I think we probably want to rank them from first to last and then go into the meeting knowing that we're probably gonna have to cut from maybe the bottom up. That would be my suggestion, but I think we, I don't know that we need to do anything formal, do you think Jennifer?
No.
As the board, I think we just need to say these are what our projects are.
I don't think we need anything formal.
But I think we, a week, but I think it's, I don't know if we need a special meeting or if we need a work session um.
I would do it as a work session.
Well, I think a special meeting, cause then if anybody, Bailey might have to have to put something on there. So if we do it as a special meeting to just discuss the spec projects and then if anybody else has, I forgot to put, to discuss my election buildings, so I'd like to discuss that on that date too. So if we could do it as a special meeting, that'd be great, so then we can, if we have to sneak anything else on, we can. So I guess the, if the eleventh works for you guys, does that work for all three of you? Does it not? Works for me.
Um yeah, wait to hear a flight, but I'll just, if I don't, um I'll do remotely.
Early, I was gonna say if earlier works, later works.
Later probably work better for me, but we'll see.
You just tell me what time, I'm open all day, so.
Let's just set it for when it works and then um I'll let you know. I don't know the details.
Okay. So what time do you guys want to do? It, it honestly, the time does not matter to me, I'm open all day, so. I'm here at your leisure.
I, it makes no difference to me. If we need to push it back to four o'clock or, I don't know. If Pete's flying or airborne.
Yeah, I wish I knew, when, when I will, so uh yeah, probably later, probably be better, so.
Is four o'clock too late? Do, is that early enough?
How much, how much time do you need, do you think at this meeting? An hour, two hours?
I was gonna say, if you don't want to go, if you want to go past five, starting at four is probably fine, but I would get yourself a couple hours.
So three?
So I'm gonna do three o'clock? So three o'clock on the eleventh, September eleventh. At three o'clock. Okay.
What time is the meeting on the fifteenth?
At six o'clock.
And if you don't feel like driving, it sounds like the city's taking a bus.
Oh, well, I think I'll drive. Well, we can, we can take a county vehicle too, we've got three of them, so we can coordinate between. I'll drop you. Yeah, I can pick you up there. That's what I figured I would do. But I figure we've got three county vehicles that we can take up, we can just carpool.
So do we need to make a motion to set this, it's just a special meeting?
If you'd like to make the motion, that would be great.
Okay, move to set the special spec meeting, specific purpose excise tax meeting for county discussion at three PM on September eleventh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
She's got it, twenty-six A.
Oh yeah, Terry's got it right there.
Oh, right, okay. I was trying to do my calendar and.
I know, I'll send you guys.
Twenty-six A. Uh the, the mosquito present for approval memorandum of understanding between the City of Laramie, Wyoming and Albany County for mosquito control surveillance services in the amount of six thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So this is, yeah, this is just our MOU um for just doing the monitoring piece that is required by the grant.
So should that be twenty-six?
Nope, it's twenty twenty-five. I, we, I think it was just, just at the last meeting or maybe the meeting before that, that you guys even approved the contract from the state. So it, it's a delayed one, it's short, it, but it is, it's through twenty twenty-five, so, um but I need to, I want to get them paid.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the memorandum of, of understanding between the City of Laramie, Wyoming and Albany County Wyoming for mosquito control surveillance services in the amount of six thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, approve vouchers for August twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve the vouchers for August twenty twenty-five. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-eight, uh to adjourn, seeing no further business between Albany County Commissioners, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you everyone that joined us and that are still with us.